If everybody would, yep, we are streaming live right now on YouTube and Facebook Live. So if everybody just wants to keep quiet until we start. We're streaming live on Facebook and YouTube. If everybody would just hold your comments, that would be awesome.
Hello, Gwen.
I would say, everybody mute themselves until it's time to speak.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
We are live streaming, everybody, just so you know. We're on Facebook Live and YouTube.
Just tell me when. Is it 7:00 yet?
Not yet. 6:00, you mean?
6:00, yeah.
We have two minutes, uh, two minutes.
Two minutes to live down.
I think, Council, we have Steve. Steve. Monica will not be on with us tonight. So Frank, he'll be running Legislative.
Okay. Hey, Gwen.
Well, Steve, Steve Holovacs is.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to say Frank. I'm your finance, Steve, yes.
You were right. Gwen, you're always right. Frank is running it tonight. Thank you. I'll mute myself now. Thanks.
I even called Steve and told him that. I still said Frank.
Give me my phone over there.
Yeah, can you do the TV after? Where's your phone?
I would ask everybody to stay muted unless you're getting ready to talk about a certain topic. And then if you want to speak, you're going to have to raise your hand in your screen or do the symbol on your. I haven't done this in a while. On your reactions, you can raise your hand.
I got 6 o'clock.
Okay, I'm going to also record off my phone. I got a couple of recordings going since I can't record in the office. So I'm going to do this for myself. We are live streaming on Facebook Live and on YouTube tonight. Okay, Brian, go ahead.
Good evening, everybody. Like to welcome everybody to health and safety. We'll go ahead and get started. We got three items on the agenda, and we're going to start off with Fire Chief Chris Dampowski. Chief?
I don't think he's on. Mayor, do you know if he's coming? Unmute yourself, Mayor. Do you want to, I don't see Chris Hartung either.
Are you going to be on our council meeting? It's at 6 o'clock. Yeah, so just dial in. Health and safety is up first. We're ready to go. Did you not get it from Gwen?
Should have gotten it when we all got it. So it been last Thursday. Do you want me to resend it to him?
Yeah, would you please, Gwen? Gwen, Gwen's going to resend it to you. Do you want it at your Vermillion dot net? Okay, good enough. If you have trouble, give me a call back.
Can we reach out to Chief Hartung as well?
I'll send him Hartung the same thing, yeah.
Well, Mayor, if you don't mind, while we're waiting, you just want to go ahead and jump to number one with the COVID-19 update?
Sure, I'd be happy to, Councilman. This is a general report on COVID-19 in the city of Vermillion. Now, some of you already, can you all hear me clearly? Good. Some of you already know that the city administration experienced a case of COVID-19 last week. An employee attending one of our boards and commission meetings on October 8th at the Decatur Municipal Court Facility tested positive four days after the meeting. Once I was told, I alerted the Erie County Health Department, which investigated the exposure. I also had the court facility sanitized before court convened the next morning. Erie County. Would you excuse me? I've got a call from Chief Dampowski. Hold on one.
Brian, did you send a message to Chris Hartung?
No, I didn't. I can certainly do that.
Yeah, tell him I just sent him a link.
Okay.
Amy not on either?
Gwen, Chief may call you. He's, he thought the meeting was at 7:00.
Okay.
Anyway, we had the court sanitized. The Erie County Health Department has quarantined one city employee and put another in isolation. No further contamination has been determined, and I do not find it necessary to take any broader actions regarding the administration operations at this time other than simply encouraging boards and commission members to move to the Zoom format for meetings for approximately the next 30 days, if that's possible. Now, the second item I'd like to report on is the city COVID situation in general. The number of COVID cases in the city of Vermillion has quadrupled since spring, and it's doubled just recently. As, and this is as reported by the Erie County Health Department. The current level of cases that we are at here in the city of Vermillion right now is the highest, I believe, we've ever had. Just to run over the history, go through a few highlights. This past spring, the number of cases of COVID in the city of Vermillion, and that's both counties, by the way, Lorraine and Erie. In the spring, the cases hovered between nine and 12 cases. It's not very high at all. This past summer, with increased outdoor activity, travel up to the islands, things like that, the cases peaked at 26. This past week, the week of October 12th, the Erie County Health Department reported a total of 55 total cases in the city, with four of those being brand new this week, and two cases requiring hospitalization. I'm happy to report that the city has not recorded any deaths as of this, this time. The doubling over the past months actually.
It seemed to get the noise, the mute, the volume, yeah.
The doubling of the, over the past several months has actually reflected a trend surrounding counties in the state of Ohio.
There should be a place on them.
Other municipalities may have more or fewer cases, but the trends in the city of Vermillion is really the situation that concerns me. This should renew our commitment to the protocol that we're all familiar with. We should wear masks, keep our distances, and wash our hands frequently. It is my hope to return to the city of Vermillion in 2021 to its traditional activities, its outdoor festivals, its public events, and things like that. But in order to be able to do that in just a mere, what, eight, 10 months from now, we really need to pay attention to our protocols and adhere to the requirements that have been approved and to work. And if we want to get where we want to go by returning to the Vermillion that we know, then we need to adhere to these protocols now. And that concludes my report. Councilman, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them. Through, through the chair, I see Councilwoman Brady.
When they make the count, do they count residents or are we talking about visitors or residents that they count in our, our numbers?
No, those, those are cases with residents recorded to be within the city limits of Vermillion, both Erie County and Lorraine County.
Okay, so we don't know that they picked, they got it here. We just know that they reside here.
Right. It all depends on the individual tracing that's done by the individual cases. And of course, you can't talk about the individual cases because of HIPAA regulations.
Thank you.
I just have a comment for William, I believe Spark, that's on. We can hear you, and I'm going to keep muting you. You keep hitting the mute back off. Please stay on mute until you're ready to talk. Thank you.
Muting you. They're doing it on purpose. Okay, that concludes my report. If I may, Ms. Fisher, were you able to contact Chief Dampowski?
Yes. Hold on, let me check and see if he texted me. He was having a hard time getting on, so I'm going to call him and put him on speaker.
Okay, I contacted Chief Hartung. He's getting on now, apparently.
Okay, I'll watch for him. Okay, Chris, I'm going to put you up to the computer and go and give your report.
Okay, very good. Hi, good evening, everybody.
Can't hear him, Gwen.
Calendar. Fire Department responded to 16 incidents in September for a total of 140 through the end of September. Bench testing, we completed that last week. All units that were tested did pass. Bose testing is currently scheduled for the first week of December. Our truck DMs. Most of that has been completed. They are coming back the week of October 26th to finish the truck DMs, and that will then start the pump testing of all the trucks. We had an incident on Yorktown Place on October 30th, 13th, that I just wanted to report on. I wanted to thank John Gabriel and all the residents in the area for assisting the fire department upon our arrival. There was an underground primary electric line that faulted. Created quite a stir over there, however. Nobody was injured, so that's the good thing. And within a couple hours, the power was restored. So I just wanted to tip my hat to all those folks and John Gabriel for the assistance that evening. And that does conclude my report.
Thanks, Chief. Does anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns? All right, I'm texting Chief Hartung right now. I'm telling him to call you, Gwen.
Okay.
So hopefully, he'll call you right now.
Okay. William, I'm the one that's muting you until it's time to talk, because we can hear background noise. Can you hear me now? They keep on muting themselves.
Gwen, you should be getting a phone call, hopefully.
I've got a lot of things going on over here.
Let's see. He hasn't texted me back, so he might be calling.
A lot of people aren't showing their face tonight, so if you need to speak on a certain topic, you can hit your reactions button and do a thumbs up, and then we'll know you want to speak, and then the chairman will call on you. Or you can show your face when it's time.
Yeah, let me try.
Do you want me to call him? I'll call him.
Okay.
Can I put you on speakerphone? Okay, hold on. Okay, we'll put you on speaker, and you can give your report. Okay, hold on. Okay. Go ahead, Chief.
All right, well, good evening, everyone.
Can everybody hear him? Go ahead.
Okay. We were fortunate enough, we got a $15,000 grant from Lorraine County Prosecutor Dennis Will's office for advancements in forensic technology involving cellphone investigations. It was a very generous donation from Prosecutor Will that allows to make a purchase of some necessary equipment to do forensic analysis of cell phones, which are becoming so prevalent in this day and time. Patrolman Leo Chandler was promoted to the rank of sergeant, and so far, he's doing an excellent job. I think we're going to see great things out of him. And Thursday, last Thursday, we swore in Patrolman Zach Scholl, and he took the vacant patrol position that was left when Sergeant Steve Davis retired. And then Mike Frisky will begin, I believe, this week to replace the position that was vacant when Dispatcher Labus retired. So some new faces, and we look forward to going with that. That was my report.
Thank you, Chief, and congratulations to Sergeant Chandler and Zach as well, both very good assets to the police. So thank you. Any comments, questions, or concerns for the police chief? If not, that'll go ahead and include health and safety. Thank you.
Okay, for Legislative tonight for Monday, October 19th, I'd like to read some before we start tonight. Council would like to remind the residents who plan to speak during the committee meeting that our rules allow you to speak one time for five minutes per topic. So this doesn't turn into a back and forth thing. We'd just like to keep the meeting moving. So Gwen, one question I have for you. Will I see any individual residents who want to speak, or will you see it?
I can see everybody. They're just going to have to either let me see their face and give me a hand, or they're going to have to show me a reaction if they want to speak, and then I'll let you know.
Hey, I'm trying to Zoom this meeting for the.
William, you're.
City Council.
You're on.
Picture and that, but I don't have any sound. Whenever they talk, it just kind of clicks and that. It doesn't say, doesn't.
You, can you hear me now? You have to connect to audio.
Okay, okay.
And I'm going to keep you on, I'm going to keep you on mute until it's time to talk, okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I'm muting you now, so there's no interruptions. Thank you. Okay, Steve.
Okay, so I'm going to start with topic number one is a review of ordinance 2020-41, Resolution 2020-R, 14 and 15, description below, and that will be Samantha Miller. Is she here?
Samantha is not here. I believe Andy is here. I don't know where he's at, though. Andy, are you on here?
I'm here. I see myself.
Oh, there he is. He's right there.
Actually, I'm right beside you on my screen.
Oh, you're way down below me, so, okay. He's here to talk about it, then, Steve, all three pieces of legislation.
Okay.
Hi, Steve, and thank you, Council folks, for allowing us to be on here this evening. We have three resolutions in front of you tonight. All have to do with, two have to do with grant acquisitions or grant applications for the purchase of a property that's down by Main Street Beach that I believe all of you are aware of, which property that is that the Western Reserve Land Conservancy is under a contract with, with the seller to purchase. So two of the resolutions in front of you are to apply in the city's name to the Land and Water Conservation Fund, and the other is to the Coastal Management Assistance Fund. The Land and Water Conservation Grant is a federal grant, and the Coastal Management Assistance Grant is through ODNR's office out of Sandusky. Both of those grants the city has applied to before with us for the other acquisitions that we've done near the lakefront. So these would allow the city to apply, and Mayor forthover to act as the signatory on those grant applications. Again, both of these are grants that we've utilized in the past for other land acquisitions down on the beachfront. And the other resolution is another similar one we've done before. But as I mentioned, we, the Land Conservancy, have a purchase agreement in place with the seller of the property, and therefore, we now need to have a purchase agreement in place between the Land Conservancy and the city so that this will, the property will transfer to the city when the time comes. The, the purchase agreement with the city does not, obviously, if you've read it, does not require any funding for the city to put in. The Land Conservancy, as in the past, is doing all the fundraising for this project via either public funding grants, like the two that are in front of you tonight, the two resolutions, or through private philanthropic support and donations. So that's what the three resolutions are. Two for grants. One is to allow the mayor to enter into agreement with the conservancy so that we can either transfer our purchase agreement directly to the city, and you can close with the seller when that time comes, or we'll close with the seller and then transfer it to the city, one or the other. Depends on how it transpires. But the purchase agreement that's in place, that will be in place between the city and the conservancy mirrors the identical terms that are in the purchase agreement with the seller that the conservancy has in terms of purchase, term, duration, when the closing occurs, everything is a mirror of what we have. So it's very similar to everything we've done in the past.
Does anybody have any questions for Andy regarding this? Gwen, do you see anybody?
I see Homer raising his hand.
Homer raised his hand.
Homer?
Homer, unmute yourself. Okay, there you go.
I think I'm unmuted. Very briefly, I just was curious. I'd heard with respect to, for example, the Wakefield purchase, that there were limitations on impervious surfaces and commercial activity and other things. Do those apply to this specific property? And if so, if, for example, there was a bathhouse restroom facility, whatever you want to call it, would it prohibit on this land any kind of vending?
No, with these two grants, we specifically are looking at those because although they do come with a, some restrictions, they are conducive with any form of infrastructure for a passive park. So, for example, the, the property that the city now owns, where the house was demolished on, that is permitted to be put into a restroom facility. And part of the master plan down there will allow for a restroom facility on that property. The property that we have under contract now is slated for a small parking area adjacent to the restroom facility. And both grant sources are well aware of that, and both of these grant sources, especially the Land and Water Conservation Fund, have often funded projects that, you know, you're not turning it into green space. You're turning it in for other infrastructure needs to, to add to the overall park environment of an area.
So if there was a concession stand or something, it would be allowed?
You could do that, too.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions for Andy here?
I don't see any more hands or reactions.
Well, Andy, at this time, thank you very much for coming and talking and explaining this to us, and we will probably, we're going to have the readings on 2020-R, 14 and 15 tonight, and they're up for readings, and I imagine we'll pass those through if everything works right. So thank you very much.
Thank you. If you need me on for a future meeting, just let me know. Let Gwen know. She'll get ahold of us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Take care. Good night.
Okay, topic two is review of ordinance 2020-30, Chapter 618, Animals. And this has been discussed for a while, so any discussion by any council members at this time? If there's no council members, I want to just.
Steve Aaron here. I just want to say that this is about an overall safety issue. I certainly understand there's two sides to the story, and it is not an indication that the vast majority of people don't take care of their dogs and, and do the right thing. This is just the way, the way I see it, the way my vote is going to be is, is just making sure that we are a safer community. So that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Holovacs.
Thank you, Steve Aaron. Gwen?
I'm thinking, I don't have the email in front of me. If everybody recalls, if the Law Department chimed in on this last change where we talked about a minor misdemeanor on the first offense. Does anybody recall that email from Attorney Anderson? Ken, you need to unmute?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, Susan Anderson wrote a memo for language she thought was appropriate to be included in the ordinance, and she sent it, I believe, to you, right?
Yes, it was sent to all members of council. It was a while ago. It might be in my binder, actually, or I could pull it up on my email, try to pull it up on my email.
Gwen? I have it in front of me.
Oh, that'd be great. Okay.
There were two things she had in there. One, that she didn't think we could eliminate the hunting.
Oh, that's right.
Because it's state law. So she felt like we needed to include that. And then she wrote in the last paragraph, "As to adding the penalty of it being a minor misdemeanor, the existing section 61801 provides that the penalty for a violation of this section is a fine between $25 and $100 for the first offense, 75 to 250, and possible imprisonment for 30 days for the second offense. I don't see this language as conflicting with the designation of an offense being a misdemeanor. But for clarity and consistency, I would suggest combining it all in one section if council wants to keep the existing language and add the MM designation." So exactly what she meant by that, I'm not sure, to be honest with you.
Okay.
Frank, could you have your hand up?
Yeah, I would support the request to change it by the Law Department, and go ahead and proceed with the ordinance, I think.
So do you want to put it back on? as amended with those changes, back on for a third reading at next week's council meeting? I would need a motion to put that back on the agenda for a reading. Anybody?
Why don't we do this? Why don't we go through all the, everybody talk, and then at the end, we'll make, we'll do a motion if that's what the rest of council wants to do. Uh, I did see Homer, did you have your hand up at one time?
I did. Uh, thank you, Councilman Hollivax. As you know, I support the general idea of a dog ordinance, uh, leash law, whatever you want to call it. Um, I am concerned, I think the last draft is the one that Mrs. Brady, uh, had provided, is that correct?
I believe so.
Yes, the last one was to include the minor misdemeanor on the first offense, that's what we.
My, my concern is it talks about containing a dog, as I recall, through running and the like. And, and I think that, I think you're trying to protect two different things, and I think you need to distinguish between those two things. One is if, if a dog is on private property, that it be confined within the property. The other is, and particularly if it's property of an owner of the dog. But the other is that, uh, if they're in a public right of way or public area, that they be under control so that they, by leash or otherwise, so that they could not approach others inappropriately. The two different things, and I think you need to distinguish between those, and I don't. Much as I think Mrs. Brady's suggestions were helpful, I don't think they go quite far enough in precision. Um, I would also suggest that you might want, you may want to or may not want to distinguish uh, between a dog on one's own property and a dog on someone else's property by permission of that property owner, but they still would want to be confined. Much as I understand the hunting exception, as I've spoken in the past, I don't think it should be limited to hunting. I think it should be any recreation. As long as they're confined on that property, it shouldn't matter. Uh, so those would be my suggestions, and, and you could distinguish between when they're on private property and keeping them confined within the property. And on public property or public rights of way where they would need to be restrained.
Any other questions from anybody?
I do, Steve.
Gwen, Brian?
I, I don't recall, and, and it's, this has been going on for a while. Did we, did we anywhere in that legislation discuss, uh, you know, leash six foot length or less? And did we distinguish between electric leashes versus actual leashes? You know, some folks, well, my dog's, he has the shock collar on, he's not, he's on a leash. Did we anywhere distinguish that it had to be tethered or? I can't remember if that was discussed in there or not. As far as the shock collar or electric collar leashes.
I don't think that ever came up.
I, I just, I just want to make sure we don't, I just, I want to make sure we don't miss a loophole here. Uh, you know, somebody might say, well, my dog's leashed, he's on a shock collar or electric collar. I just want to. I, I don't, to, go ahead.
I thought on, um, the other copies, they did have electrical fence, that kind of thing, tethered on property, on right of way, a leash. All of that, I believe, was already, we haven't changed any of that.
Okay.
I know of.
Section one, number one.
Okay, I, like I said, I didn't recall that, it's been a while, so I just wanted to make sure we, we're not leaving any loophole out. You know, some folks might want to say, well, hey, I got an electric shock collar leash. Well, no, it has to be a leash, tethered leash while in the public right of way.
Oh, gotcha.
Is there any other questions from anybody, or anybody want to speak here?
I think we need to probably do another draft. Because we've had the input from the law department, we've had input from Barb, and we kind of don't know where we're exactly at, I think, at this point. So maybe keep it tabled.
Keep it tabled, and at this point, reorganize it, rewrite it, and get it back out to council. And our next meeting next week, what would that be, the 26th? That's a council meeting, so we'll have to put it back.
So we'll put it on for November committee.
Committee. Are there any other questions on that from any of the council members? If not, we'll move on to our next topic. And our next topic is the transient rentals, review of the draft ordinance. Um, you know, this has been discussed many times, and, um, I guess there's some issues that everybody's gonna talk about. One of the things I want to just throw out to let you start thinking about is, I have a question just based on the fees itself. I think they're a little high at, I believe, the 400. I think half of that is where I'm looking, and like, probably half of that to renew, but I'm gonna throw that out now for everybody else to start discussing it. Emily?
I agree with that. Um, I think the 200, maybe for the first, the license or permit, however we're wording it. And then any consecutive after that would be 50. That would be my suggestion. And we had talked about, as long as they kept it going, it was each consecutive year, then, you know, have it at a lower cost for them. I think with the, um, having it at 400 and paying for the software, I, I think that should be a part of the city's, um, responsibility and not the residents. And that's all I have to say.
For a beauty.
Well, yeah, it's kind of a dilemma. We also said, you know, there's penalties if you don't. So I would say you must, it has to be higher if they don't register. I mean, there has to be some penalty if they don't, on their own, come in and register. So maybe we make that one 400. You know, it should be bad enough that we encourage people to come, to come out. And I also think that the penalty, if they don't, we have to have penalty if they fail inspection, because there's gonna be costs to the, um, the building department to go out a second or third time. So I, those two things, I think, the penalty side, um, have, we have to do also. You know, so those charges have to be higher.
Barb, one question for you. I, I understand what you're saying about if you were caught without the permit, and it's gonna be higher. Uh, would they fall back in line the way the rest of the ordinance would feel if, you know, you got caught, you paid that, the following year, you follow back what the renewal cost? You know, is it 50, is it 100? As long as they start following the rules after that, they'll follow the. And what are you suggesting the cost of a, a second or a third stop by the building department to, to do an inspection that failed?
I think our ordinance suggests $50.
Okay, and you feel the same on that?
So I guess the other question is for Amy, are we covering our costs? I mean, this is a business, so it shouldn't cost the city money, it shouldn't cost our residents money for someone make money. So I, that, we, I'd have to turn over either to Bill or Amy as to whether or not we're covering ourselves.
You, you will not be covering your costs at that, at that rate. It would be that it would have to come from some other revenue source or the general fund balance.
If we raised it to three and two, would that do it? Just a second, if anyone else has anything to say, I'm doing some figures here.
Steve, I have Drew, Drew Worley, who is, uh, wants to speak.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Drew.
Alright, so, um, I don't have the figures in front of me, I'm not home, but I have them off the top of my head. Uh, you guys wouldn't be paying for anything. Uh, I asked before last time about how much we spent for that Granicus software. We paid them $4,044 on the 11th of September. Um, based off of the figures that I received from the city on the taxes that we've already collected uh, for the bed tax for the county, uh, you've already got more than enough to cover that money. So just to rest you guys a shirt on that, and I'd like to, uh, keep the rest of my time, so I'll stop talking now, so I can talk again here in a little bit.
Well, the way it works is you get one shot, so you know.
Perfect, then I'll keep rolling with it.
Okay, thank you.
Real quick on your other things about the, the dog ordinance, real quick. Um, there's multiple Ohio revised codes already.
Well, hold on.
Take care of everything, oh, no, you're gonna take up my time, so I'm just gonna speak, and then I'll stop.
Well, I'll, I'll stop you for a second here, we're on a, a different topic, we passed the dog ordinance.
I know, I'm already done saying what I was gonna say about the dog ordinance. Just that there's multiple higher revised codes already cover exactly what you want to do, we're passing the dog ordinance. But again, back to this, um, you guys wanted to change this, you passed this last year to more, uh, aptly mimic Hurons. I'm not sure if you understand what's going on in Huron right now with their ordinance. They're already trying to amend theirs. Um, but the first time you guys brought this back up to change it, Monica, who's not here, uh, happened to say that she talked to the building inspector, and she, and he was happy with the initial $100 that you guys had passed prior. So if you're gonna go through with this, which I'm sure you are, I asked that you keep it at the 100 that you had already said was fine enough. And again, uh, the city's not gonna foot the bill for this software. You paid $4,044 already for the whole entire annual year. Um, the tax money that you've already received this year alone on a bad year because of COVID has already covered that significantly, so don't worry about that. Now with that, I'll, I'm done.
Thank you.
Yeah.
In response to that point, the, the point of the actual tax, the bed tax that, again, is not paid by the operator, it is paid by the guest, similar to a hotel tax, is to have some additional revenue to go towards the operation and maintenance of the city, law enforcement, various things that are potentially given more demand because of the number of visitors in the city.
Okay, anybody else in council have a comment on this?
Frank?
I guess one of the things we gotta look at is, you know, I know that some, just through conversation, weren't happy on the fees. And that's one of the things we, you know, before we start voting on it, we're gonna have to come up with some, something that is by the majority of the group's side, and, you know, the renewals and all that. So any other comment from anybody else on council on the, uh, fees for this, uh, transient rentals?
Frank, Steve.
Steve Aaron here, I just want to say that I agree with what Emily said. Uh, those fees need to go down, we need to look at, um, the income, I'm not so sure about the point that was made about whether we don't have to worry about it, but, uh, we definitely need to make sure that we're not losing, but, but the people who are not complying need to be the ones that are paying anything above, you know, 2, 300, I mean, that's even a lot, but, um, we, we gotta have an enforcement mechanism, so that's all I have for that. Thank you.
Frank, Steve.
Go on, Frank.
You're muted.
You're muted, Frank.
Okay, I would, okay, I'd have to go by the definitive information from the building department and finance department to make sure that we are subsidizing the costs of what we're trying to do regarding code enforcement. So I would just need to fall back on on, on their official opinion as to what the fee should be. Uh, that's all I have to say about it.
Anyone else have a comment on it?
We could have them.
Go on, Frank.
Okay, we have them relook at it. Because definitely you don't want to be prohibitive, and on the other hand, you don't want to be subsidizing if we're requiring, you know, annual inspections and what have you. So maybe the administration may want to have to re, relook at that. You know, anyway, that's all I have to say.
Any other comments from council?
Homer had a comment.
Homer?
Thank you, Councilman Hollivax. Um, as I think all of you know, I have little enthusiasm for this ordinance in the first instance. Uh, and I don't think that the ordinance or the inspections or the licensing system, or whatever you want to call it, really is going to solve any of the perceived problems, really, that you're having with Airbnbs and the like. I also think a lot of scare comments have been made that haven't occurred locally. Um, but as far as I can tell, the principal issue is one place and one complaint. Um, that said, you know, I, i- i- if you want to assure safety, then you should be inspecting everybody the same, not just, you know, a few folks. I think that there have been questions raised in the past legitimately about, you know, how are you gonna find everybody, are you going to apply this to everyone in Linwood where there's a lot of rentals? You know, and how is everybody to know about this and comply? Frankly, as has been referenced tonight, I think this ordinance is largely about raising taxes. This is something that's pushed by Erie Shores and Islands because they want more bed tax revenue. And then you get bed tax revenue, too. And whatever cost of enforcement of whatever problems you have with visitors in the city have been borne through property taxes and whatever for years, it's not like it's something new. So it kind of does pay for the inspection, but the inspection, if it's been, excuse me, been indicated that it doesn't cost over $100, then I see no reason for anything more than that to be the charge. And if it is a reinspection situation, then you can charge the additional 50 or whatever. But I, I think that this is unfairly treating some people, but if you're going to do it and, and make people pay these fees, I think they need to be reasonable and not discourage uh, summer visitors that frankly, your economy depends upon, uh, that you get income taxes from, too. Let's be clear, the already, if they have rental income, you get income tax from it. If they don't pay the income tax, Rita gets their federal tax return and finds out about it, and they get audited. Um, so they're already paying taxes, or they're already breaking the law, uh, in a far worse way than anything that you're setting forth on this, including federal felonies. Um, if you're going to do it, I would do this very carefully, I would start very inexpensively, I would try to go for compliance, and I think it is totally wrong to talk about charging the cost of software or the cost of new city employee time to go find lawbreakers u- under this new law you're passing and put that on the people that are registering legally. That's just completely wrong. Uh, frankly, I think, you know, if you're going to address parties, too much parking and things like that, you should be addressing that for all of us, for all property. For rental property that's a month, and so forth and so on. But if you insist on dealing with transient, then I think you need to look at what you're talking about in transient. And if somebody rents for 28 days versus 30 days, then they're going to have to register. If somebody regis, does an Airbnb for their condo once for a week in 52 weeks, they need to register, and they're treated the same as somebody who runs a cottage, who's a business that they rent out by the night or by the week. Um, I'm curious, do we, do we charge $100 or $400 per room to inspect motels every year? Uh, I don't think we charge that much per room. So there's some issues of fairness that I think you have to take far more of a look at than you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Homer. So I guess, I guess my question to council is, um, where's everybody's opinion on the fees? And, you know, which direction do we want to go? Barb, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I, I think, I mean, I respectfully, to some extent, disagree with Homer, in that these are home businesses. If you run an IT company out of your house, you have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeal and get a provisional or conditional use of your property. This is no different. People are running a business out of their home, they're renting their property short term. It's a, it's a motel hotel kind of a situation in a residential area. So I think different rules apply than a long-term rental. If I have a neighbor that's, lives there for a year. I get to know that person. I'm comfortable with that person. If that house is turning over every day or every week, it's, it's an unsafe, you know, it feels like an unsafe situation. I don't know who that person is. I don't know what their name is. I don't know anything about them. But I think we have to be careful that this is a home business. And that's, and, and I don't know, are we looking at Phil's, um, replacement ordinance? Where he has, um, a lot in here about going to the BZA to get approval? I think he did a great job of adding to our ordinance and giving it a little bit of, um, you know, backbone. The fees, I mean, we can decide. I definitely agree that if somebody doesn't get a permit, they should pay more. If we wanna bring the fees down, that's, that's fine. But I do think that we have responsibility to make these people treat it like a home business, which means go to the BZA and get, you know, permission to do this. When, when their neighbors have the opportunity to object. So anyway, that's for what it's worth.
Any other questions here? Anybody comments? I guess what, what does council wanna do with this? Uh, turn it back over to the administration to adjust the fees, or do you as council and us wanna do that ourselves?
Mayor. Unmute, Jim.
There we go. I think the, uh, administration was represented on the committee that, uh, came up with this ordinance and the, uh, uh, recommendation for fees were put forth. So if council feels that this fee should be something else, I think maybe the council wanna make a suggestion as to what those might be.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I guess at this point, then it's up to us, council, you know, um, I, I feel that it was too high. I feel that we should come down. Yeah, what's the number? You know, is it two hundred and then a renewal, one hundred and renewal, fifty-four, uh, repeated inspections? But, you know, it comes down to the rest of us in council. Uh, does anybody else have any suggestions?
What, Steve, what is the cost to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals? Um, if I have a, if I had a home business, what does it cost to do that? Does anybody know?
Gwen?
It's a hundred dollars. Isn't it a hundred dollars?
It's a hundred dollars? So, I mean, that, that only cost, that, any home business is gonna have to pay a hundred dollars to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. So, you know, that's a starting point. I mean, that, and that's without inspection. I don't think we inspect an IT company out of a home or whatever, so.
No, I don't think we do.
This is Steve Haren. Uh, my, I think what we need to do frankly is, I'll just throw out this number for further discussion, but two hundred for the initial and then one hundred um, after, uh, and then it should remain two hundred if you are not, it, it, it should be two hundred if you're not following up doing, it, it, you know, that would basically cut it in half. Um, you know, I don't wanna lose money either, but, but the point is, is that we are really, to some extent, you know, hampering the people. Homer makes a very good point. We're, we're harming the people. We're affecting the people that are following the law the most. That's what we're doing. Now that, that's the way life is. I mean, we, most of us, we follow the law, we still pay for police protection, I mean, but I, I do have to just stress this point and, and I've been kinda dancing around it frankly, but my main concern about this issue really has to do with child protection and has to do with many of the information, much of the information I've gotten in my career, my professional career, which is going back about twenty-eight, twenty-seven, twenty-eight years now, and it has to do with child protection and, and what's going on and where and how modalities are being used for people that are harming children. I'm not gonna go into any, I don't think I need to go into anything deeper than that, but at the end of the day, law enforcement needs constitutional tools to do its job. I've practiced law, I'm, is a defense lawyer for a long time. Fourth, Fifth and Sixth Amendment protect people, but at the end of the day, I also know that, um, you know, uh, we need to do the right thing and, and that to me is non-negotiable, but the money is. Do not wanna harm our, our citizens who are doing the right thing, that care about their property, that the inspection would be very quick because they've already done the work to make their, their home safe. So I just, uh, feel very strongly about that, but I think if we cut that in half, see where we are financially, if we have to come back next year, maybe a year from now, we look at the income, uh, derived, see where we are as far as the cost of enforcement, uh, then we can relook at that. But, uh, Steve, I agree with you, four hundred is really high. It, that doesn't mean that I don't think the administration came within a bad faith estimate on that. I just think that at the end of the day, four hundred's high, so, thank you.
Anybody else from council?
I, uh, Steve.
Uh, Brian?
But Frank, go ahead.
Oh, I think to get this off the dime, maybe go ahead with, with Steve's suggestion and as indicated, take a look at it financially in a year or so, cuz none of this stuff is set in stone, you know, we can, we can modify ordinances as we proceed, so I would support Steve's, uh, philosophy or comments at this point.
Thank you, Frank. Brian?
Yeah, just, you know, I'm, I'm constantly reading stuff about this and getting updates and, and I, I see stuff, like even today, anywhere from twenty-five to two hundred and fifty dollars. Um, and that's even in big cities, that twenty-five to two hundred and fifty dollars as far as the fees. Um, and, and, and in lines with, with, with Steve, uh, saying about, you know, the safety and, and this one article talks about, you know, be a good neighbor. And it, and it covers the whole thing about, um, uh, cities knowing who's in their city. And, and, and we are such a, uh, transient city that we have a lot of people come in and out, in and out. And, you know, we pray and hope that, that, that ninety-nine percent of these people are good, and they, they typically are. Um, but there's that, that small population that, that, uh, that, that move in or come in transiently that, that may have a different, um, uh, take or different idea what they're gonna do while they're here. So I, I think we should, yeah, definitely take a look at the fees. Four hundred is, is, is kinda steep. Um, again, we, we are a transient city. We want people to come here. We want people that, that have these Airbnbs to, to continue to bring people here because they're bringing business to our, our, our small town, so, um, I, I don't wanna, uh, tie, tie the chain around their neck and, and, and have them leave town as far as the Airbnbs, um, would rather them stay here and, and work with the city. And I, and I would ask those who, um, you know, I'd ask all that are involved in that to please regi- please register with the city. Uh, it's so much easier to just register with the city and, and follow the rules and be a good neighbor. So, uh, yeah, I think definitely we need to relook at these fees. So thank you.
Hey, anybody else? Uh, because at this point, that was the only suggestion that Steve Haren has given us.
Emily.
Do I? Emily? Okay, go ahead, Emily.
I couldn't see my hand. Um, yes, and maybe put something in there for people who have not done it, um, have avoided it or whatever, pay maybe a little higher, but I do agree that if the, um, board, zoning board, it's a hundred dollars to go there and then you have the, um, inspection on top of it. Um, I would say anywhere between one hundred and two hundred. Nothing, not anymore. And then after that, I guess fifty or a hundred, but as low as we could get it to keep people wanting, you know, to do the right thing and bring them back to doing it each year.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anybody else? Barb?
No, I'm, I'm good.
Okay, Steve?
Are we looking at Phil's, um, rewrite though? That was one question I had. Are we, is that what we're looking as a final legislation? Phil Lorions, um.
I don't believe we were. I think we were still stuck on version three.
Okay, because he.
Because version four, what didn't go to the subcommittee, that was just something Phil submitted on his own.
Okay, cuz it has, I think it has some good points, you know, if we wanna, everyone wants to look at that.
I think there's still a lot of unknowns. Um, I don't know, maybe a suggestion to have a work session um, on this topic where we're in a group setting where we can sit down just on this topic for a night. It's just a suggestion. It's up to you guys.
I guess it's up to council right now if they wanna take a motion from Steve Haren on the fees and go from there, or, um, is there another session you guys wanna work on? Frank?
I would, as indicated before, I would, I would, I said, get this off the dime, cuz it can be modified, it can be changed, and we can keep rehashing, but maybe, you know, put a stake in the ground and start, you know, pass, pass this as it is with the lower fees as Steve has indicated, then go from there. Um, anyway, that's just my thought.
Steve, can we have a motion?
Yes, I'll move that the, uh, inspection fee is two hundred dollars and then one hundred dollars annually after that. Or, or were we doing that by annual? Let me just, it was, it was annually, right? So you.
Renewal, renewal.
Be annually, correct. That's, that's how we had it. Right? Or did, or was it every other? There was some discussion about every other year, I think, but.
It was by annual. We switched to annual.
Yeah, it was a four, a four hundred dollars, and then I think after that it was fifty dollars, I believe.
Now, the fifty was for, um, if you failed the inspection.
Right, right, reinspection.
Did you wanna finish that motion or?
Yeah, make a motion to what was just said.
Two hundred.
Yeah, two hundred.
Any, a second?
Second.
So now we.
Any questions?
Well, we wanna make sure we have a penalty in there for people that don't, so.
Right.
We say.
We have a penalty.
Two hundred for the first inspection, a hundred for preceding years or, um, following years, fifty for reinspection and four hundred if you don't, or three hundred if you don't, um, register.
We have a penalty in there now. Barb, did you see that?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a hundred dollars a day, I think.
Yeah.
Or leave it at, leave it at that, that's fine.
Gwen?
We're, Steve Haren here, real quick, just penalties are always up to the court. We don't, you know, that, the penalty just sets forth what the court can do, so it doesn't mean necessarily a court is gonna find somebody a hundred dollars a day, so.
Right.
Gwen?
Ready me to call the row?
Yes.
Holovacs?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Luca?
Yes.
Skahan?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Motion carried. I'll prepare that and put it on for a first reading next week.
Okay, thank you. Uh, that finishes the agenda for the legislative for tonight. Uh, the next, uh, committee will be Streets, Buildings and Grounds. And number one on the, uh, agenda is the DORO in Dog Park, and that has, uh, Mary Lou Sesko.
Sorry, Gwen, I, I thought I was last in the order. Hold on. Hi, everybody. Um, Main Street is involved in. Um, let me start with the DORA first. I sent a synopsis of what DORA programs, which stands for Designated Outdoor Refreshment Area, are, is all about. Did everybody receive that? Everybody? Okay.
Yes.
So just to bring you up to date, this is the beginning of a conversation we're having, and I just really wanted to bring it to council's attention because I know that it has appeared in, uh, a few papers, um, in the past. Main Street, uh, and usually Main Street organizations in Ohio, um, are kind of charged with moving these programs forward. Um, do I need to explain what it is or council is already up to date? Gwen, am I okay?
I would say you need to explain because other people are on here and plus it's gonna, it's being viewed live stream, so you probably should explain it.
So a designated outdoor refreshment area is a program that, uh, the state of Ohio, the Ohio Liquor Control Board has had, uh, in effect since two thousand and fifteen. It's, it's nothing new, but with COVID and people trying to expand the way that they can sell their products, carry out and create more business in a time where you social distance, the DORA, uh, has been catching on and there are more than forty communities in Ohio right now that have implemented, uh, these programs. As, um, we are just at the beginning of this conversation. We are trying to find out if it is something our businesses will support. It's, we're trying to find out if it's something that really even belongs in Vermillion, so I wanna make that really, really clear that we are not pushing anything forward yet. We are talking about the possibilities and how we would implement this in Vermillion. So what it means is you create a designated outdoor region and just so that you have a visual, think of, um, Liberty Avenue say from, uh, the Brute Awakenings to Colon Ice, which is on Liberty and Decatur, and then Main Street from where Main Street Vermillion is at the tracks down to the beach. Let's just say that is your outdoor, your designated outdoor refreshment area. And just as another example, you choose Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday from four o'clock to ten o'clock, that is when your program is in effect. So what that means is that people can go into liquor-serving establishments and get a drink that they are allowed to enjoy outdoors within the designated outdoor refreshment area. It's, it has a lot of different, uh, safeguards in place so that people cannot bring liquor in from their homes or anywhere else. There are marked DORA cups. People wear wristbands identifying them um, as having purchased a DORA drink. You are not allowed to take a DORA drink from one establishment into another and all of the other liquor, um, control laws uh, apply. Um, right now, I have just been talking to a lot of communities on what their experiences are with it. Um, what I'm finding out, because we have a library and parks within our, our downtown region, and what I'm finding out is that there are no problems that anybody is able to share with me about having established something like this. But again, we are at the very beginning of this conversation. I just wanted to make council aware that we were having this conversation. Programs like this don't happen without council creating legislation for these things to go forward. If we do think that we have enough support from our businesses, if we do have support from Main Street and the Chamber, um, we may next year be prepared to ask for a temporary, um, uh, placement of something like a DORA within our downtown, which would mean let's do a trial period. Let's see if ninety days with this program proves that it works for us, that it doesn't create any problems. So I just really wanted to bring council up to date on that. And again, really stress that this is something that we are just discussing. It is nothing new. Lorraine has a DORA. They have just gone back to council to ex- expand their boundaries. Port Clinton has one. Uh, there are many communities, and I do believe I put them in the information that I gave you that, um, that have doors on the books already. Any questions that I can answer anybody at this time?
Barb?
Uh, I noticed that you say that no, no, you can't take it into another facility, but then down further you say our retailers and restaurants may choose to permit DORA beverages inside.
Yes. Um, to be clear, that means that I cannot buy a beer at Route Six and take it into Chez Francois or vice versa. You can't take a drink purchased from one establishment into another liquor-serving establishment, but you can take it from, let's say, parents go to, uh, Soda Grill and the kids all wanna go to Soda Grill and the parents uh, want to appease the kids, but boy, they would like a beer with dinner. They can go to Route Six, buy a beer, and as long as the owners of Soda Grill agree and. and as long as the owners of Soda Grill agree and want to be part of the program, they are allowed to, they will allow that to come into their establishment. There's signage, there's boundary markers, there are all kinds of safeguards in place to make sure that this program works and runs smoothly.
Are these drink cups sealed like they are if you get it to go drink?
I do believe they have a, a lid on it, but they are identified as DORA cups, so people, if you have somebody on the street with one, it does show that it is part of this program. So it is allowed on the street as opposed to somebody just walking down the street with a red solo cup.
Anybody else on council? Or the residents?
Drew Worley had his hand up.
Okay, Drew?
Just real quick on that, I think that promotes over drinking only because if I, I, I don't really drink, but if I purchase a drink from Route Six and I go to say Chez as your example, and I'm not allowed to bring that in there, I think you should leave that up to the business themselves, just like you would with Soda Grill, like you'd mentioned. Because if I can't go into Chez with that drink, I'm going to drink that really quick because I don't like to waste money. Whereas opposed to, if you could bring that in there, if the business allows it, I would drink that slower. But that's just the first thing that came to my mind when I heard that.
Drew, that is something that is actually built into the program, you can't change that within your community.
Is there anybody else?
Homer?
Thank you, I'm really glad it just came up because I was actually writing to y'all about considering a DORA. Recently read the statute. My recall is it's 47 acres, but it's either 40 or 47 acres that a small town can create as a DORA, not saying you should do that big. I would certainly expand it a little bit beyond the boundaries, I would certainly take it, you know, to, to north of Chez and probably south of the tracks if you're having certain events, but if you can imagine like a third Thursday or something, you're encouraging people to be outside, but you want to promote people going into the establishments and this really would help that. You certainly are going to want to think about the hours as well as perhaps the months that this is in effect, you know, if it's dark, do you still want that to happen? But then again, if you're having the ice festival, do you want people to be able to take their beverages out to wherever they're creating a fire in the ice or things like that in the evening, or do you want to be able to stroll during the entire day with their beverages? I mean, you're going to have to sort through those things.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, Homer, there's a lot of.
I'm sorry, go.
There's, there are a lot of things to consider. We have not got that far right now, what we need to know is if this is something that our businesses want to get behind. If you've looked, House Bill 669, which was recently passed, allows for to-go drinks, which did any of us ever think that we would ever be seeing to-go drinks in our car sealed up, but yet we didn't think we'd see that, this seems like, this seems like it might be something that is kind of a natural extension for that. It provides local restaurants more opportunities to be able to create some revenue for themselves. So this is not so much for events for Main Street or the Chamber. We're looking at it as an opportunity for businesses, for opportunities for people to come downtown, maybe linger longer and shop in the stores a little more. What we are finding, and I ask, and I talked to a lot of Main Street communities as we've moved through this, this does not create a Mardi Gras scene, nobody has been reporting any specific problems, nothing more than we would have right now or have had in the past. It's not an invitation to behave badly.
If I could complete my comment.
I'm sorry.
There is one indelicate subject that you all need to consider, and that is the necessity to have public restrooms if you're going to have people walking outside because if people then just walk into somebody else's establishment and they're not buying there, they maybe refuse the opportunity, so that's an indelicate or unfortunate subject we do need to consider.
Any other questions from councils?
Mayor, forth over.
Councilman?
Yes.
Ms. Sesko and I and the other committee members have had discussions about this. I really do think it lies with where she indicated the benefit is, and that would be with the merchants and the restaurateurs. I think they need to be objectively surveyed first to see if they want it. And then, once that's determined that they do or they don't, then I think it'd probably be a good idea to see if want to move forward with it, and I think that's pretty much all that Ms. Sesko is saying today is that still looking into it. And I think the route is to see if the people who are proposed to benefit from this really want this thing. After that, I think there's plenty of detailed discussion to be had.
I agree with you, Mayor, and Barb, I see your hand up.
Well, the only thing I wouldn't like, I think I would like it to stay out of our parks just because if, if you're a parent with children and you want a safe place, you know, a park would be kind of.
Drinking, drinking is illegal on the park now anyway.
Well, I know, but I, we, you know, it's included here as a possibility, I, I would like to see it stay out of the parks, I guess.
If we can do this, so we can have Mary Lou get back with the, the merchants downtown and the businesses and then possibly get back with us in the future on what the take is from the other businesses downtown, and at that point, we can see what, whether the other rules, the boundaries and what they're looking at, if that's okay with the rest of council. Steve?
Steve Heron here, real quick, yeah, I agree, Hunter, I was just going to kind of say what the mayor had said. I do want to hear from our merchants, either by letter, if they want to come in and, and address us. But I, I agree with Mr. Worley, I think it does, it's a very serious problem. A potential consequence is over drinking that we don't want to have, we've had terrific, not this year obviously, but terrific there, there are Thursdays and all kinds of other things. And people, many people come because there's not alcohol. You know, people aren't walking around, I mean, it's a very safe environment and we just have to keep that in mind that I think that's going to be my balance, you know, to what extent are we encouraging a problem versus our merchants who may say this would be very good for them, so that's where I am in that, thank you.
Brian?
Yeah, certainly would again echo that as well, get an idea of what our merchants want. And I also include the Chamber of Commerce. Obviously, they're, they're heavily involved too with downtown, so I think we need to get an idea how they feel about this as well.
Okay, anybody else on council? Or the residents? If not, I'm going to ask Mary Lou to take part two, the Dog Park.
The Dog, yes. So to bring everybody up to date, the Chamber and Main Street Vermillion, we've been working together to develop a dog park. We have heard from the Goddard family that they felt that a dog park would be a fitting tribute to Mr. Goddard, who brought so much to Vermillion. At this point, we have been working with the Parks Board and addressing concerns and questions about possible sites. So a site has not been decided yet, but we are exploring lots of different options throughout the city. Nothing's been decided yet. We do have a concept based on just the idea of a dog park so that people would understand what that is. We had originally wanted to start some fundraising for the dog park before we had decided on a location. But I think that we really thought that we could start selling the concept without the location, we have the cooperation of the Parks Board to move this forward, but I understand that there are concerns here that it would be better to have a location in place before we started fundraising. And I know, Steve, that you, Councilman Hollivax, that you had some comments. I feel that at this point, until we are done with our work with the Parks Board, that maybe we could just put our request on hold until we have some more information to provide council on where this development of this park is going.
Okay, is there any questions for Mary Lou? If not, I just want to reiterate what I said a week or so ago. I'd rather see the plan, what you have going, what park. And at that point is, you know, funding will come at that point, but also the thing that my question is, when the funding runs out, how are we going to handle keeping, and that's part of the parks? And that's why I wanted input from the Parks Department, so we had everything put together so council can make a, a good judgment call on what we're going to do. I'm not against it, you know, but I want more information other than taking donations and we'll, we'll see what happens. Because the way I look at it is, a comment came out of the last meeting. If I make a donation and nothing happens, it'll go into the general fund. That's not my belief on what I want to do with my money. My money is if I give a donation to the Dog Park, I want it to go there, not into the general fund or to the, another fund itself, so what, you know, bring me a plan, I don't have a problem, once I see what's going on, thank you.
We will do that, we are working on that.
Brian?
Yeah, it'll be discussed tomorrow night at six on Zoom at the Parks Board meeting, so it is, it is on set for a meeting tomorrow.
Thanks, Brian.
Yep.
Anybody else comment on this?
Emily?
Um, yeah, we also mentioned that what about maintenance of the park, how that would be funded and that were some of the other concerns with it. Just wanted to make a note of that.
I agree.
Anybody else? If not, Gwen, do you see anybody else? We'll move on to the next topic for the Streets, Buildings and Grounds, thank you, Mary Lou, for coming tonight and explaining that all to us, and then keep us posted on what's going on with the, the other items with that, okay?
I will definitely, that'll be after the first of the year on the DORA, thank you.
Thank you very much. Topic two will be the tractor mower, and I have Tony on that, so Tony, if you want to explain to us what's going on?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to discuss purchasing a new roadside tractor and mower for the city. The current mower is 23, 23 years old and has become plagued with issues. The last two years alone, we've had to spend over $15,000 in parts and labor to keep the tractor in operating order and has gotten to the point where I feel we'd be better off purchasing a new mower than throwing more money into the one we have. We have obtained three quotes and found the best quote from Poland Implement in the amount of $135,400, which includes a trade-in value of $10,000 for our tractor that we currently have. This quote includes a new tractor, a flail mower, which is the rear mower, and a side mower that will get down into the ditches, and it can also raise up and move vertically, which would greatly help the areas along Sunnyside Road, for example, where you see the brush growing right up to the edge of the roadway. So I think it's time, and I would like to ask council to prepare legislation for a new tractor and mower.
Anybody have any questions for Tony on the new mower? Emily?
Could you just give us the cost of it again, please?
$135,400.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Tony? Tony, I guess my question is, yeah, I don't, and Gwen, you got to help me if you see someone with their hand up, but I'll jump in here. Tony, through the state, is it cheaper to go with Poland than it was through the state funding or the state purchasing?
Well, this is a state bid.
Okay, so he, thank you, that's what you answered for me, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Drew?
Drew?
Real quick, so it's 135 for, that's with a 10K trade-in, so is the 135 for net?
That's, it, it's, it's 135 for after the 10K trade-in.
After the trade, what's the model of the mower?
The mower is an Alamo Machete 18, and that's the side mower. And then the flail mower is an Alamo SH88.
That's all.
Thanks, Drew. Barb?
Or can you, you have service available for this, for an Alamo?
It would probably have to be serviced through John Deere.
Is it a John Deere or is it, no, I'm just worried about parts. I know we had trouble with one years ago, we couldn't get parts, we didn't have a distributor nearby, and because it wasn't a local brand that I could find somebody to service it, it was a big problem.
The Alamo mower is, an Alamo mower is a pretty common brand for the, for the mower portion of it, yes.
Okay, I just never heard of it.
Any other questions? Gwen, do you see anybody else?
Frank?
Frank?
I, I just think that that, it should be a great asset because we've heard numerous times over the last few years on we can't get a cut because the mower is out of service, and then that doesn't include the, the lost labor of people fiddling around with an old mower like this. And with the, with the side mower, I know that'll be a great advantage, as you mentioned, on Sunnyside and other places where you get, we, you just, it's just very difficult to keep the road, you know, good visibility on the side of the road, so as long as we've got the, the money in the budget, okay with me.
Any other questions? If not, can I have a mo, Steve?
Yeah, real quick, I mean, we got to do it, it is what it is. Can't keep paying, throwing money away on repairs, so seems like every year we get some capital item that comes up ready for replacement, so it's part of the, part of the deal.
Anybody else that we have here? If not, I'll take, I'll make a motion to purchase the, the tractor mower at 135 for and help me out with the change on that with the trade-in of 10,000 on the other tractor. Do you want to hear a second?
Legislation prepared.
You're right, that's what I said.
Add that in there.
Yeah, add that to it. Have a second?
Second.
Any questions for council? If not, Gwen?
Aaron?
Yes.
Holmes? Skahan?
Yes.
Luca?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Hollivax?
Yes.
Motion carried, I'll have that on the agenda next week.
Okay, number three I have on the agenda tonight is ice breaking contract, and I have Tony's name behind that.
Again, thank you, Mr. Chairman, bids were open for ice breaking on October 8th. The city received one bid from South Shore, Dredge and Dock. An initial payment of $59,525.33 for mobilization, insurance and standby is due upon approval. This bid was the same as last year's bid, and I would like to ask council to prepare legislation for the ice breaking contract.
Any questions from council or residents?
Yeah, it's how, what about the charges going forward, the hourly rate, are they the same as last year also?
They are the same as last year, $525 per hour for a four-hour minimum.
Anybody else, I've only seen about four people.
The mayor.
The mayor, go ahead.
Amute yourself, Jim.
Eric, sorry, Councilman Hollivax, I just wanted to add that since last year's effort, I did have three meetings with the Army Corps of Engineers and one with the US Coast Guard regarding more passive means of ice breaking in the, in the river. There really are none that would supplant the idea of still having to break ice ourselves. I also contacted at a resident's suggestion. I also contacted at a resident's suggestion, a ice breaking group that resides in the Black River in, in Elaria and Lorraine. They did not have interest or feel they had the equipment to do a job in the Vermillion. So although there may be some minor things we can do in the river, there really is nothing that's going to replace ice breaking as we've known it, unfortunately.
Thank you. Anyone else? If there's no other comments, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Frank?
Second?
Yes.
Steve, Heron? Okay, Brady?
Yes.
Luca?
Yes.
Skahan?
Yes.
Hollivex?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Heron?
Yes.
Motion carried. I'll have that on the agenda next week as well.
Okay, thank you, Glenn. The last item I have on the Streets Buildings and Ground for tonight is the Woodlands entrance. And I have Emily's name by that.
Thanks, Steve. Um, I know this has come up a few times, uh, even before I've been on council. And I know that there still hasn't been a solution for it, and it's the Woodlands entrance by the Pitt Barbecue. If you don't know where it is, it's over on the east side. And it, there are safety issues going into the development. I know in the past, the fifty mile an hour speed limit's been mentioned, but also just our stop signs within the development. Turn in that corner because it, it's so close, so I don't know what I'm trying to say, but, um.
Kind of clear it.
Yeah, it's hard to make the turn if somebody's at the stop sign. Also, there are boulders, so people are trying to avoid the boulders. And they're, they're either being knocked into the road by trucks and buses, or I know of two people that have had thousands of dollars worth of damage to their car hitting them just because of making that turn and another car being there, being concerned about hitting the car. Um, I'm not really sure who can do what about it, but I wanted to bring up some suggestions that people have said, maybe making the first stop sign, leaving the development a yield sign instead of having someone park there while you're coming in. Or maybe setting it back a little bit, so when, if someone is there, if we can't change it, that they're not right at the turn of when someone comes in. I don't, I don't know about how much of that area we could maybe clean out or take the boulders away. So when they turn in, you know, they're not hitting them. I don't know. I guess we need some suggestions on what we can do with that, how we could help with that being a little safer. So I guess we're asking for suggestions or anything we can do out of any of those suggestions, and I don't know who needs to handle that. I don't know if Chris could take a look at that and come up with suggestions and let us know if there, if there's anything that can be done.
Frank?
Is there a homeowners association in the Woodlands?
Cause I'm not, not one that's actually.
Condos.
Yeah, it's, oh, the condos have one. Ours, we're supposed to have one, but it's not affect, it's not in action at all. I've been there sixteen years and we don't pay dues or anything like that.
Okay, I just wondered, because I would think that, you know, the entrance to the Woodlands is pretty much up to the people in Woodlands. Wouldn't it be, you know, that, that's, is that all right of way? Or the developer first put that in and just been there since the developer put it in? You know, that property where the sign is and the boulders are. I don't know if it maintains that.
The stop sign, as far as that goes, would be the city and the idea of maybe changing it to a yield sign, I guess that would be the city also.
Oh, okay.
Chris Howard's on to talk.
We'll take a look at that. Where the sign is currently located, it's when, within the state of Ohio right of way where the existing sign currently is. So we can look at and see if we can widen that out, but we'll look at some options of opening that up a little bit. In the past, we did look at reducing the speed limit on Liberty. But as we know, we couldn't get owed out to change the speed limit through that, that section based on the development east of the bridge. But we'll gladly take a look at that and see what options we can come up with.
Thank you, Chris. Anyone else have any questions or any comments to this? Gwen, can you see anything? So why don't we do this, Chris and Tony, you'll be able to get back to us on an upcoming committee meeting regarding this, maybe in November possibly?
Sure.
And if there's not any other questions, then let me check and make sure. It's hard seeing if everybody, anybody else has a comment.
No.
If not, is that okay with you, Emily?
Uh, yes.
Okay, then we'll wait to hear back from Chris and Tony next month on the entrance over there. And if there's not any other questions, the Streets Buildings and Grounds for Monday night will be adjourned.
If finance committee opens, the first thing, and this is going to be the Amy show, I think, right? Whoever you are. First thing on the agenda is the CARES funding.
Yes, just wanted to update, we did, within the last week, receive the third round of funding from both Erie and Lorraine counties, giving our total since March, seven hundred and one thousand six hundred and thirty-seven dollars, lumping the change off there. We have a deadline tomorrow to do our first reporting, and any monies that aren't spent or encumbered need to, would need to be returned to the respective counties at that point for possible redistribution. And so we actually, that was one of the things I was completing at the office today before I left, was to get that activity report filed with the Office of Budget and Management and can report that we did either expend or have all of the funds encumbered as required prior to that interim report. Also, the same case, there was an additional eighteen thousand dollars that was a remote work grant, remote technology grant that the courts received from the Ohio Supreme Court that was later converted to a federal grant. That one is fully committed or expended as well. And in the categories that we had talked about earlier, so we have public safety and police department payroll is the major area of expense in addition to some technology expenses we've had for remote work, as well as some software packages that have helped with some enhancement, for example, in the building department, et cetera, that help avoid as much person-to-person contact, like the building permits online, things like that. And so we have expended those also on protective equipment, sanitization items, that type of thing as well. So that will be part of moving right into the second topic, the 2020 appropriations. You'll see the increases there for the last, that last round of funding that was approved by Governor Dewine after we had our, our last appropriations approved. And then some, just some minor adjustments. Also, in planning for 2021, it's going to be very helpful that we have our collective bargaining agreements in place for the next two years. So we'll have the, the salary amounts. We are making some staffing adjustments at a couple different departments as noticed in the correspondence from the mayor. So we'll be getting the final information on those to include, as well as working with any of the departments on capital needs that they may have going forward as well.
So do you feel like we're going to come out with a net gain in the seven hundred and one thousand? And as far, as far as the, the general fund?
Um, right now, it's, there's a potential. It's, it's really a little bit early to tell. We have had some somewhat positive numbers. While we've had losses on our Rita income tax as an example, they're, they're not as big as had originally been forecasted from the state level. But we're just really getting past the revenue that has finished up the filing, filings for 2019. So the next couple of months could be pretty telling on where we think we're going with that. So it's kind of a wait and see. But, but I, I think that we will at least break even for 2020 overall. I think that that would be fair to say that we would be able to do that with, with the help of the, of the CARES funding. And then also the property fleet and liability insurance. That is a very important topic that in looking at that felt needed some guidance and, and some additional expertise in that area. So I have talked to the folks at NFP that manage our health insurance to have them put together and evaluate the proposals for us. One of the first things I've said to them is that it should be inclusive of our, all of our local agents who are interested in bidding. But the insurance world just keeps changing and someone with the expertise to let us know, are we overcovered in some areas? Are we undercovered in some areas? Things are just changing rapidly and I want to be able to make sure that the recommendations we're making to the city. It's almost two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars a year that is paid in premiums. So that's, that's a big number and we need to have, make sure that we, we're getting what we, what we need in that realm. And then the last topic is our benefit renewal. That feeds into that 2021 budget. We again this year, for the second time around, all of our staff members were to complete the Form Fire process, which is collecting information on the employee, the covered employees, as well as their dependents for health information. Having that data in place is very important for our insurance consultants to then be able to go and negotiate the best rates from the various carriers. And this year, the second time around, it was much easier for everyone. And within just a few days, I think we had almost everybody completed. So we really appreciate the staff's help with that. That makes our agents able to go and get that pricing earlier for us. We also have had their, their pricing, the coverage again with various carriers, and we're in the process of doing our health insurance, our health screenings again in the last few weeks. And what that does is it allows all of the participating employees to have their medical reimbursement contributions loaded onto their card so they can begin using those benefits right away when the year starts. And that was very, very well received last year for our employees. So everyone's anxious and signing up again this year.
And you have no feel yet for what the renewal rate is going to be, whether it's going to be flat or?
I think for groups our size, in talking to NFP, just as a conservative, hopefully a worst-case scenario, they've been seeing things in the ten to twelve percent range for increases. It's been an unusual year with COVID because there are many elective or non-emergency services or procedures that people have put off. And things like that are not going to happen.
It's not going to say anything?
Again. So. I'm sorry.
Not sure. Um, LGX, hold on one minute. LGX Power, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm not, are you guys connected? It keeps saying connecting to audio and I cannot mute you and we're getting your background noise. Can you try muting? This is Pam? All right. All right, well, go on. I can't, can't mute.
Amy, were you done with the benefits or you?
Well, I was just going to say, it's, it's a, it's harder for them to tell claims history, both the carriers and the consultants, because, for example, things that people may have put off during the pandemic, maybe a preventative or screening procedure such as a colonoscopy or a mammogram or different types of surgeries that had some discretion in timing. Some of them are not going to be duplicated. Obviously, you're not going to get two of those next year. But it may also be forcing some of, some higher claims into next year because of things that have been delayed. So it's a little bit hard to tell how the underwriters will look at some of those factors when they look at the rates. But we should have those within, within the next month.
I, I know it's not an item on here, but you need the bond, the bond ordinance passed tonight. Is that true?
Yes, yes, thank you. That is an amendment that is on the agenda for the resolution that was passed on September fourteenth, authorizing the refinancing of the bonds. That's coming up after our work with Moody's during last week and looking at some of the things going on in the market as best ways to maximize that opportunity for us. If we revised our escrowing agreement that is related to that particular refinancing, it allows us to save over a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars right up front because we're, we've already budgeted those expenses into our December payments. We'll be able to escrow them out of the proceeds as well. So with a year where maybe some of our state reimbursements have not been as heavy in areas such as gas taxes, things like that, it allows us to maybe have just a little more money in those funds moving into 2021.
So can you give us just a gross overlook of bonds and escrow accounts? I mean, I don't understand the whole thing, but I mean, a real short tidbit, I mean, I, I guess I was surprised that the bonds, some of them that went out to 2032 could be sold now as opposed to going to maturity.
Sure, sure. When, when bond financing is done, that it's usually done with call dates in it. And those are dates prior to maturity where the person or entity that issued the bonds is able to pull those, that debt back in and take an opportunity to refinance it. So rates right now are obviously very advantageous and able to get much lower rates than are on those bonds currently to go out to their maturity. So what have, why we've had refinancings each year for the last two or three years is that Sedina Associates is tracking and looking at any bonds that have callable periods within the, the year. And then they'll package those together and look and see what our overall rate reductions and cost savings could be by refinancing those. So that's what allows us to refinance, not all of them at the same time. So they're kind of staggered in, in through the, through the process because of when those call dates are. But the initial estimates that just based on what some recent activity has been in the market, that for that package of bonds to refinance that we will easily be saving over half a million dollars for, for the city over the maturity, the balance of the life of those debts.
And the esc, escrow amendment is basically the escrow account is just a holding account for these monies? Is that?
Correct. Correct.
Does anybody have any questions for Amy from all the items that she covered tonight? Okay, I guess finance is.
Wait, wait.
Uh-oh.
I think, Steve, do we need to go into recess and find? I think Steve, do we need to go into recess and finance?
Yeah, I'm going to request that we go barb into recess. Um, I'm going to make a motion for an executive meeting. We got any hiring or firing of employees.
After the, after the council meeting, we'll come back to finance.
That's correct. Yes. We, we'll recess the present finance meeting and come back after a quick council meeting. Yeah. Frank seconded that. I don't know if you got that, Gwen.
I did. Holmes? Brian, are you on there? Jay losing? Brian, there you are. Raise your hand, Brian.
Yes.
Gayhan? Unmute yourself.
Yes.
Luca?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Hollivax? Unmute yourself. Guys are killing me here.
Yes.
And Heron?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carried. Now we'll go into the.
The dogs want to join in. Are we going into, okay. Um, you have a flag, Gwen. I have a flag. Do we need, okay. Thank you. Oh, wow. Here's a.
Excellent.
Jared. Well, um, call the, welcome everybody to the, uh, October 19th special city meeting. We will stand with the pledge of allegiance followed by reflection or silent prayer. To the flag.
States of America.
Stands one nation.
God, indivisible.
All.
Hollivax?
Yes, President.
Brady?
Yes.
Luca?
Here.
Gayhan?
Here.
I would stay, everybody stay unmuted right now. Holmes?
Here.
Heron?
Here.
Stark is absent.
Yes. Okay. We'll go to the next item, which is item number four, reading the ordinances. I'll go ahead and do that. First reading ordinance 2020 dash four one and ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Vermillion, Ohio to enter into a purchase and sale agreement by and between DPTAL LLC, the seller of which Western Reserve Land Conservancy, WRLC, and Ohio Nonprofit Corporation is the sole member in the city of Vermillion, the city, a political subdivision in the state of Ohio and declaring an emergency. Do we have a motion to suspend the rules with respect to ordinance 2020 dash 41 and declaring an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Brady?
Yes.
Luca?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Gayhan?
Yes.
Hollivax?
Yes.
Heron?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Pardon me. A motion to adopt ordinance 2020 dash 41 and declaring an emergency.
Frank, Luca, can I have a second again?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? We've, uh, we're addressed this, uh, a little bit ago. Uh, and the importance of, of, uh, having it done, but is there any further discussion? Gwen, you're going to have to make sure.
Yeah, I don't see any. Everybody good?
Thank you. All right.
Yeah.
Brady?
Yes.
Luca?
Yes.
Gayhan?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Hollivax?
Yes.
Heron?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Okay. We'll go to the next item. First reading ordinance 2020 dash 42. Ordinance amending the, the, excuse me, definition of refunded bonds in section one of ordinance number 2020 dash 33 passed on September 14th, 2020 and replacing the form of escrow agreement on file pursuant to section eight of that ordinance and declaring an emergency. Do we have a motion to suspend the rules with respect to ordinance 2020 dash 42 and declaring an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Luca?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Gayhan?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Hollivax?
Yes.
Heron?
Yes.
Motion carried.
We have a motion to adopt ordinance 2020 dash 42 and declaring an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Holmes and Luca?
Yes.
Yes.
Any discussion beyond, uh, what we talked about in committee? Okay.
Stark? Barb, sorry. Heron? Did that all wrong. Holmes?
Yes.
Gayhan?
Yes.
Luca?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Hollivax?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Second reading, resolution 2020 R dash 14, a resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Vermillion, Ohio to file an application for financial assistance with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources for public recreation purposes through the federal land and water conserv- conservation fund program declaring an emergency. And this is a matter that, uh, the administration is requesting tonight too. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
We have a motion to suspend the rules with respect to resolution 2020 R dash 14, declaring an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Holmes?
Yes.
Luca?
Yes.
Gayhan?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Hollivax?
Yes.
Heron?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Do we have a motion to adopt resolution 2020 R dash 14 and declaring an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Do we have any further discussion beyond what we talked about in committees? Tonight. I don't see anybody. Do you, Ms. Fisher? Okay. Thank you.
Hollivax?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Luca?
Yes.
Gayhan?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Heron?
Yes.
Motion carried.
The next item is second reading, resolution 2020 R dash 15, a resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Vermillion, Ohio to file an application for financial assistance with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources Management for coastal management purposes through the Ohio Coastal Management Programs Coastal Management Assistant Grants Program. Quickly, does this need to be passed by emergency?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to suspend the rules with respect to resolution 2020 R dash 15 and declaring an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, who was that? Gayhan? Okay.
Yeah.
Brady?
Yes.
Gayhan?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Hollivax?
Yes.
Luca?
Yes.
Heron?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Do we have a motion to adopt resolution 2020 R dash 15 and declaring emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion regarding this matter, uh, outside of what was discussed in committees? Nobody? Okay.
Holmes?
Yes.
Gayhan?
Yes.
Luca?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Hollivax?
Yes.
Heron?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay. Before we adjourn, um, I'm just going to make a quick statement. Uh, next week, we are going to be meeting in person at Council Building at, uh, seven o'clock. Again, we have this, uh, public hearing and then we have regular counsel. Uh, as Mayor alluded to, and as many of our elected officials have alluded to, the numbers in Erie and Lorraine County statewide are going up. I'm going to be taking information from a number of people, uh, involved in, um, this matter. Herman, you know, what, what we need to do, uh, as far as entrance into that meeting. I know that the topic that's discussed has the potential to be of great interest, uh, to, to the citizens. So, um, we may have to do some things where we have people waiting outside before they can come in and make a, a, a statement. That is not something I would really want to do, uh, but, um, we certainly are going to have, everybody have the opportunity to come in and make a statement and we're going to do what we need to do, uh, to ensure safety. So, um, if you get to, uh, the council building, um, and, and you're told to wait outside, please be patient. That's the reason, uh, in the event that you'd like to, uh, come to council. Um, so we, we want participation, but please know that the numbers are just astronomically out of control. And, uh, so we need to, um, uh, make sure that, that we are safe and that, and that our citizens are safe. So please know that if, if that is happening next week, that's why. And if you're mad about it, you can be mad at me because I'm the person that will be kind of making decision. But I will give everybody a heads up, um, and, and at least we'll, we'll know. So I appreciate everybody's, uh, uh, understanding regarding that. And I, I do understand there's arguments on both sides, but again, safety is not negotiable as far as I'm concerned. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
And dress warm, just in case you have to wait outside.
No, it's not July anymore. So.
Right.
Okay. So that's it. And now we're going to go into executive session. So Gwen, you're.
Yes, everybody, um, uh, outside of council. And who do you want from the administration to be present?
Mayor Fortover, the law director and Amy.
Then everybody else needs to leave the meeting, please. Uh, I'll let you know when everybody's gone except for. I need to remove LG Power because I'm having a heck of a time with them. Okay. City IT is, um, you know what, Steve? Um, I need to hold on because we're live. So we need to kill the lives. So hold on one minute. I'm going to have to contact IT.
No problem. Not a problem. Thank you. We can all take a quick break if we need to. Except for Gwen, who's got to call IT.
All right. I'm going to mute myself.
Okay. I'll be right back.
It could be about 10 minutes before we get disconnected here on live. Or sooner. So if everybody wants to take a break for a second and then come back, that'd be great.